Hello and thank you for watching the 2024 Fall Candidate Forums hosted by the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. My name is Eli Kepkin. I am the owner and the operator of the Brick Room Restaurant here in Ashland. Joining me in moderating this discussion is my friend Mary Gardner, who is a past Chamber President. Hi, Mary.
Hello.
Good to see you. Today we'll be introducing city council candidates for position number three. So I'd like to thank Dylan Bloom and Eric Nivikas for joining us this afternoon. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to it. So each year, the Ashland Chamber hosts legislative forums. This year, we're hosting forums for the Ashland City Council, Ashland Parks Commission, Jackson County Commissioner, and Oregon State Representative. This forum is being recorded for viewing on the RV TV cable network as well as the RV TV app. The content will also be available through the Ashland Chamber website, which is ashlandchamber.com. So we'll just go through really quickly the format of the forum. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. Following the opening remarks, candidates will have, be asked a series of questions with three minutes to respond. A bell will ring when candidates have 30 seconds, and then a bell will ring when candidates have 10 seconds remaining. Follow-up questions will be kept to two minutes, and those will be at the discussions of moderators, Mary or myself. And just as a reminder, this is a forum and not a debate. So without further ado, we had a coin flip, and Eric won the coin flip. And so he will be starting us out with the first question. So in your opening statement, please tell us why you're running for city council. Briefly discuss your skills and accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Great. Yeah, my name is Eric Nivikas. I've been a resident of Ashland for 35 years. About two and a half years ago, I had a fire in my apartment in the downtown, and it left my wife and I without a home, and the community really rallied around us. And OSF actually put us up into an apartment for six months, and then a lot of people gave us support. So one of the reasons that I'm in running for a council is to give that, what the community has given to me, back to the community by representing the community as a city council to look out for the broader needs. And having seen the problem of housing personally, it really comes back to me to where I feel a real need to work to provide housing for the community. And I was on the city council some time ago, about 14 years ago. And one of the successes that we had at that time was setting up the infrastructure to build 120 affordable housing units. And I did study architecture in school, so with a focus on planning as well, urban planning. So I really have an understanding of urban planning, planning issues, and I've worked as a consultant on planning projects as well. So I have that background to really understand how to focus on affordable housing and to get it done. And I have the experience too on the council, having done that. So that's what I really want to bring to the council, bring focus to diversifying the economic base of the city as well, so that we can have a community that's more accessible to a younger upcoming generation, where people can find good quality jobs and housing as well, to keep our community economically and culturally diverse. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. All right, Dylan, same question to you. In your opening statement, please tell us why you're running for city council. Briefly discuss your skills and accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my name is Dylan Bloom. Grew up in Ashland, was not born here, preface that because I know that could be a hot button issue. But I went to Ashland High, right after Ashland High, went into SOU. When I was 17, my grandmother kind of did that thing where she said, "You're 17, you're about to turn 18, it's time to have an apartment." She paid my deposit and then turned me loose. So I started working downtown when I was 14 years old, sometimes two jobs, working restaurants as a dishwasher, prep cook, line cook, front of house, host server, I've done it all. Worked at a number of restaurants in town, some unfortunately that are not here any longer. Went to SOU, studied political science while I was there, met my wife, who's an exchange student from Poland. After a seven-year long-distance relationship, we got married in 2019 here in Ashland, had a young kid, Andrew, who's now three years old. I've got another coming in February, excited about that. So why am I running for city council? Well, the answer to that is there was some openings, the former mayor and a councilor resigned, and I was fortunate enough through a ranked choice voting process with 18 other candidates to get chosen for one of those seats along with Councilor Dale. And really, my big pitch to the council at the time was a focus on economic development and diversification, especially on the south side of Ashland. That's where I grew up and, you know, seeing how Ashland, what Ashland was in, say, 2005, and what it became, what it has become at this point, I think that we've stagnated quite a lot. I see a number of young families leaving town. And so my focus has been on developing the Child Care Grant, which I was a part of with Councilor Hyatt, to make childcare more affordable for families, expanding our housing options through the Housing Production Strategy and my service on the Housing and Human Services Committee. And, you know, all around, trying to get the city stabilized so that we could actually move forward with some of the plans that have been developed already in the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with you, Dylan. If you could please tell us your top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, thank you, I think that I'd be remiss to say that fire, wildfire is not number one. I mean, that's top of mind for all of our community. And, you know, the city of Ashland has done a couple of things, you know, with our Hazard Mitigation Strategy and Wildfire Protection Plan that is in development right now. We've also done really important work in the watershed, clearing out a lot of the dead decaying Douglas firs that are dying up there and making sure that we're getting those out of the watershed, cleaning up the underbrush to protect Ashland. But that's just a start. There's a lot we need to do in our urban interface as well, and I look forward to continue to work on that. Beyond that, I would say housing and economic diversification are the two big ones. I look at those one in the same. You know, if we don't have good, high-paying jobs in Ashland, it makes it very difficult for young families to be able to afford to live here. If we have housing that people cannot afford, it makes it very difficult for people to want to come here to work. So, you know, looking at the Housing Production Strategy, developing, you know, lots of varieties of housing, not just low-income housing or affordable housing, but single-family and multi-housing manufactured homes. I mean, there's a variety of tools that we can use to get there, I think is really important. On the economic development and diversification, I think that we need to diversify our economy. We need to lean into the mountain biking and outdoor recreation field. And we're starting to do that, but I think we could do more expanding our trails. Look, OSF does a great job with our tourism, but it's not fair to OSF and it's not fair to the city to rely solely on one entity to do that. Beyond that, I think that Sydney needs to step up its efforts to reaching out and bringing businesses into town. And that means working with, you know, a management advisory committee in South Ashland as well as in the downtown area to help identify what those lots are and then coordinate with our economic development person, Jordan Brooklin, who was recently hired in the city, and actually start bringing companies into town and not relying on them to just find us.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic.
And so Eric, the same question to you. Tell us the top three issues or challenges that you feel Ashland faces.
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the top priorities for me is the downtown at this point because we are seeing businesses close, we're seeing commercial space empty, we're losing the vitality of our downtown. So really focusing at this point on our downtown is very important. And the way the city can do that is through a downtown planning effort, through a downtown plan. And our downtown plan hasn't been updated since 1989, and this is part of our comprehensive plan that should be regularly updated. And what a downtown plan is, is it looks at comprehensively at all of the elements affecting the downtown from traffic flow to parking to housing to zoning regulations to street furniture to economic development. And it brings all of the stakeholders together at a common table or at small group meetings as well to discuss all of those elements of our downtown and really come up with a plan and then an implementation strategy to really revitalize our downtown. And that's what I think should be a top priority right now for our council. And right now, the Chamber of Commerce has been doing a lot of good work through Eco Northwest, but I think that the city of Ashland, the city council really needs to take a lead on that issue. The other issue is housing and diversifying our economy because as I spoke about in my opening statement was that we need to diversify the culture of Ashland. We're seeing young people unable to move here. It's becoming more and more exclusive, and through really focusing on diversifying our economy, trying to get small manufacturing jobs and protect zoning areas that provide employment, we can bring more jobs to our community. And then the other element is, of course, housing. And I've already talked about my experience with producing housing for this community, and I'm going to continue that focus. And it really takes focus. I think what the council's been doing now is really spreading out their efforts too much where we get HUD money, and they're spreading that out to multiple nonprofits. And you can really consolidate that through a five-year consolidation and bond against that where you can put five years of HUD money into one project. And getting one project done that can be an example really moves the ball forward. And that's what I think we really need to do. The other thing is looking at maintaining our urban growth boundary. The city of Ashland has always taken a strong stand for protecting our urban growth boundary and looking at high-density development because this is so important to transit and multimodal transportation and creating our city as a climate-friendly city. So by protecting that urban growth boundary, we move the city forward as a model of a climate-friendly city. And I'm going to really work to protect the urban growth boundary. It's unnecessary. The city's done a lands inventory, available lands inventory, and we really have 40 years of available lands. And as well, we can look at upzoning areas to allow housing to build up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And the question is going to go back to you, Eric. There are many areas people wish to pursue as they enter into elected office. So what are your priorities, specifically, how would you fund them? And if one of your priorities doesn't require funds, what would be your strategy to have your objectives achieved?
Right. Again, I'll go back to the downtown, focusing on the downtown, really trying to get urban revitalization moving forward, getting our businesses moving forward, creating housing in the downtown where people live, work, workforce housing. And then they also stimulate the economy on the off-season. So restaurants are being used by people living in the downtown all year. As far as funding, through the Department of Land Conservation and Development, there are transportation and growth management grants available to the city of Ashland. The city utilizes for other planning projects. And through that, we can get the funding to move forward with a downtown plan and really focus on that downtown and revitalization. And then for implementation strategy as well, there are state grants available to continue to fund that too.
Great, thank you for that. And Dylan, same question to you. There are many areas people wish to pursue as they enter into elected office. So what are the priorities? And specifically, how would you fund them? Where in the cases where there isn't funds required, what would be your strategy to achieve your objectives?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's never enough funding, and there's always a dozen priorities. Look, I mean, I think first and foremost, it starts with understanding what the needs are. And fortunately, you know, we've had partners like the Chamber of Commerce and Eco Northwest, which my opponent here has pointed out, who has developed a diversification study. And that gives us the framework to go off of. So that work has been done, and I don't think that we need to identify funds for any kind of plan like that. The city has a $385 million biennial budget, right? And we have some deferred maintenance, and we have obvious costs that we need to take care of. But there's a lot of money there that can be prioritized into some of these plans. And really, what the plan needs to be focused on is implementing this study. That's what needs to be done. We do not need to keep going out and getting money to do more studies. So when we talk about doing big projects, well, yes, there is grant money available for that. There is money within the city budget to do that. But it's about prioritizing those and not reinventing the wheel. About implementing it, it's about working collaboratively with your colleagues and with stakeholders around the community and finding consensus and being willing to compromise on certain things to get what we need done. And that's something that I have done and I've demonstrated on council is I've worked with stakeholders and people that I disagree with even on council. And, you know, we managed to find compromise on those issues. So, you know, am I going to sit here and I'm not going to list off X grant, Y grant because those are contingent on us implementing some of the, you know, recommendations that have already been developed and plans that are already in place for the city.
Great, thank you.
And so for this one, I'll start with you, Dylan. How do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber and Travel Ashland?
Yeah, I mean, I think we do a lot, certainly in this last biennium, we've, you know, given more money to Travel Ashland to help them out. There's been collaboration already with, you know, doing some of the events that have been done downtown. With Mystery Fest is a really good example. And, you know, I talked earlier about our new economic development person and the city being more involved in going out and recruiting businesses to come into Ashland. And that is a role that the Chamber traditionally, you know, is involved in. But, you know, the Chamber only has so much funding, the Chamber only has so much bandwidth to do a lot of that. So how can the city bridge the gap in that? And that's why we have this economic development person. And that's a position that, you know, myself and another councillor, Eric Hanson, really push for with the city and with the budget, and we got that person. And so we're, again, you know, we're making, we have a lot of momentum going in the right direction to implement a lot of the things that we're talking about today. Those things are in motion, they are happening. We had some deferred maintenance, we had to stabilize our staffing levels. We've been, we've managed to do that over the last two years. And so for me, now it's about, let's get on the train and let's start moving forward and implement a lot of the work that we've already developed in council.
Great. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I heard the question, thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. You know, I really appreciate what the Chamber has done. I think you're doing a really good job as far as gathering data for moving forward, looking at who our tourist base is, who our patrons are, who are using our facilities, and how we can diversify our tourist base to bring more people here. I do think, once again, that we really need to focus on our downtown because we're really beginning to lose businesses downtown. And Dylan is saying that, you know, the city council has already done enough through the analysis that you've looked at, the Chamber of Commerce. But really, a downtown plan is something much more comprehensive. We have sidewalks that are much too narrow, we can look at widening our sidewalks, we can look at bike parking, we can look at public space, we can look at a variety of issues. Signage, I think signage is a real problem downtown. There aren't, tourists often don't even, I've had tourists, I do a market booth downtown, ask me, "Oh, where are the Shakespeare theaters?" And just some signage like that could really be beneficial in stimulating our downtown development and bringing those businesses back to life, bringing diverse businesses here and stimulating that economy.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I wanted to, I guess, go back to Eric. I'd like to ask you about the water treatment plant and where you stand on how to move forward with that.
Yeah, excellent. I've actually been taking somewhat of a lead role at this point in supporting the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant, it was built in 1948, and it sits in a very narrow canyon. And it's very prone to flooding, and we've seen these flood events time and again, 1964, 1974, 1997. In 1997, I was having to go out to Buy Mart parking lot just to use the portable toilets and to get potable water. So it's a serious issue. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was no fun. And, you know, no water for two, you don't realize how much you appreciate your water until it's not there. So looking at passing this funding mechanism that's before us this November is something that I'm really working on, and I'm actually committing lots of my campaign funds to supporting that at this point because it is so crucial that we get that project moving forward and replace that water treatment plant. It is aging regardless of what happens, we're going to have to invest a lot of money into it. But we shouldn't be investing bad money or good money after bad. We should be investing in a new project and completely updating that. And what it'll mean too is that we have a chemical treatment plant that uses less chemicals because it's more high-tech, or a water treatment plant, excuse me, that uses less chemicals. And as well, it addresses some of the other problems that exist with our water plant like toxic algae blooms that have become a serious problem. There's algae blooms in our reservoir, and it's very difficult to treat them. So there'll be an ozone process preliminary system that addresses those problems with a new plant.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that you've been speaking out on this. I've been on council the last, you know, almost two years, been about 19 months now. And so I've been going through all of these planning processes. I voted on the loan that is now kind of coming before the voters. And I concur with everything Eric says here, absolutely, it's critically important. And I think that, you know, it's important too, is that you touched on the technical issues, and I appreciate that, you know, especially about the algal blooms. But I'd really like to highlight kind of, you know, the value statement of it. And look, I believe fundamentally in, as Americans, that we need to invest in our infrastructure and our future, right? I mean, the things that we have today, we wouldn't have if previous generations didn't invest in that. And sometimes that gets forgotten by some, and it's important for us as leaders to remind people that that's what we do. And the other point that I think is really important is understanding what this funding mechanism is. It's a line of credit. A lot of people think that we're taking out a loan for $75 million, and that's that, and here's the interest rate. That's not the reality. The reality is, is that we already have capital set aside to begin construction, to begin this process, right? As we start building and we start doing that, we already have grants lined up, like ARPA grants, right? The American Rescue Plan Act. There is money already coming down the pipeline. When the time comes that we need to take that draw, we can take that draw. Let's say it's 10 million, let's say it's 20 million. We are only going to be borrowing what we need to complete the project, and it might not be the full 75 million, it might be this full 75 million. And those interest rates don't kick in until we take that first draw. And our great Public Works Director is monitoring those interest rates and is prepared to take a small draw if necessary to lock us in so we get the best interest rate. So yeah, I very much encourage the voters out there to build this for both the technical reasons that Eric pointed out and also for, you know, the values that I believe we represent here in Ashland.
Thank you. How are we doing on time? We're doing okay on time. So you guys both spoke about housing as being an issue. And along with that, housing as well as homelessness as being an issue. Would you guys both take a minute or two minutes just to maybe speak to some of the potential solutions that you would bring forward? And I think we should go back to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So I guess I'll start with the homelessness one. This is a big topic, you're talking about housing and homelessness here, but they are interrelated. So when I first got onto council, you know, one of the first things that came up was the state funding, the grant funding to purchase a building to have a shelter. And it was an interesting process, and I'll admit my naivety kind of in executive session, not really knowing what's going on. And we were told by the city manager at the time that we needed to move forward, we needed to do this, time was running out. I voted to do that. And you know what? For a period of time, we were able to get folks sheltered beyond what our original commitment was. And importantly, we identified a permanent location for severe weather shelter. And it's great, and reach out to Avram Sacks and please volunteer there, it's very easy, just a little plug for him. So we've got that element of it. But we need to understand the broader, how do we tackle, how do we deal with and solve the problem of homelessness? We are not going to do that in Ashland. What we can do is mitigate it. And what we need to do is have a balanced approach. And like what I was talking about earlier about collaboration is that we need to work with all stakeholders and people in the neighborhood and businesses that are affected by this and find solutions. I fervently believe that we should not allow our public spaces to be completely taken over by any group. It doesn't matter whether it's homeless person or me going out and deciding that I'm going to take over a park. It's public spaces, it's the commons, it's open for everybody. However, we do need to be compassionate, we do need to identify spaces for people to go. We've started with the night lawn, we recognize that that needs to be developed further. It is a temporary stopgap, and we are working on that. But most importantly, we as a city need to invest in services to help folks get out of the situation they're in. One part of that is housing, but I'd also like to focus on workforce development. You know, how do we get people, not only the labor skills they need to be successful, but the life skills? You know, I worked with a young houseless gentleman who worked at the place that I work with. He's got a three-year-old just like me, and, you know, he was recently let go and because he struggled with money management, he struggled showing up on time, no call, no show. And it's a tragedy, and there's only so much we can do to help with that. But I think that the city can step up and offer more services to bridge that gap.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, homelessness is an issue that I've been working on for many years in the community, trying to bring attention to that issue and really find solutions. And I really appreciate what the Chamber of Commerce has done on this. For years, the Chamber of Commerce pushed for harder policing, harder policing, harder policing, and it really was a failing strategy. And looking at ORA and trying to find alternatives and find solutions and manage the problem has been very beneficial, and we've seen a lot less conflicts downtown. I do agree with Dylan that the camping situation is not really working, the camping. And we need to go steps further and really get people into shelters, into housing, and really address the problem because it's really an overall community problem. Having abject poverty in amongst us where it's a major fire hazard, we see drugs funneling through that community, there's a lot of things that affect all of us. So the more that we can address those problems, the more we can address the problems of our entire community. Let's, back to housing. There are a lot of options we have for housing. One thing is upzoning that I've talked about already, especially in the downtown where that can stimulate economic growth as well, seeing more housing. We've seen that in Eugene, where Eugene's put a lot of housing effort into their downtown area, and it's really revitalized that downtown. I went to school at U of O, and when I was there, a lot of the downtown was boarded up. And I've traveled back there now, and the downtown is a live vibrant place with lots of things going on and new businesses. So it's really very much affected by putting housing into the downtown. And I'm going to really work to promote that and to allow upzoning in the downtown for housing as well.
And to clarify, upzoning is that where you allow to build up?
Yeah, where you allow an additional story. You can incentivize that around affordability too. So you allow them to go up one more story, but they have to have that much square footage of affordable units within the overall footprint of the building.
Great, thank you. And I didn't know if you had an opportunity to talk about the affordable housing. So I'm going to open that back up so you have an opportunity to...
I appreciate that, thank you, yeah. I mean, because again, they're both kind of large issues that do overlap. So yeah, so, you know, again, looking at the Housing Production Strategy, again, work that has been done and plans that are there, there are things we can do. You know, land banking, for example. So, you know, Eric talked about earlier about, you know, holding those HUD funds and building that up. Well, that's something the city is doing. And so I encourage people to look into that and tune in and join our committees, and you'll learn more about that. But being able to land bank and the city being able to buy property gives us a lot of leverage in the kind of infrastructure we're able to put in and also being able to pick and choose the kind of developers we want to come in to build there, right? Another thing that we've done, and I think was really important that I cast a vote yes on, was the Beach Creek subdivision, and they were really struggling to get affordable housing developers in there. And the city decided to step up and said for free, "Yeah, we'll take those plots, and we'll go out and we'll find developers because we don't have to charge a developer to do it." And I think something that's important to understand when we're talking about affordable housing is that the people that build low-income affordable housing are nonprofits, and there's not a lot of them in the Rogue Valley. And so one of the things the city can do is reach out and incentivize and find nonprofits that are willing to come down here. But if there's a question of why aren't we just building, building, building? Well, we're talking about a few nonprofits in the Rogue Valley competing with all the other cities in the Rogue Valley that are trying to do that work. And the reality is, is that Ashland doesn't make it easy to develop. And we need to do more to make development easier and more affordable and more appealing so that people build here, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, or even low-income housing.
Great, thank you. And so that brings us to our closing statements.
Ready?
Yes.
Want to go another hour?
I knew we'd throw in an extra question for you, but I believe we'll start with Eric. So two minutes to just go ahead and give a closing statement.
Yeah, again, it's my deep commitment and love for this community that really drives me to run for city council. I'm going to be really focusing on reinvigorating the downtown economy through starting to move forward with a downtown plan. I think it's a very critical issue right now with businesses closing, commercial space empty. This needs to be a real focus of the city council. And we have the power to change zoning, to look at parking issues, the breadth of issues affecting the downtown. And if we want to see our downtown revitalized, it's going to take an effort, a strong effort from the city council. We're at a real crossroads right now where we can see, I've lived in We're at a real crossroads right now, where we can see, I've lived in places where the downtowns fail, where buildings are boarded up and severe problems result. So I'm going to be focusing on that. I'm also focusing on housing, again. The city also has a great deal of surplus property available, and I'm going to make sure that that is earmarked either after it's sold for affordable housing, or it's developed directly as affordable housing. And again, the city isn't consolidating their HUD money right now, and I'm going to be working on finding one project to work on, and then consolidating that HUD money over five years. And that requires going out to the state for a bond, so the city clearly hasn't done that right now. And then again, diversifying the economy. If we're going to see our community become more diverse economically, we're going to need to diversify our economy. And one of the focuses of that is protecting zoning for employment. Right now, we have this Townmakers Project, where we're talking about shifting that zoning away from light industrial. I think that's a real mistake and could even affect our downtown, trying to create another commercial zone, another urban zone. We need to keep that as an employment zone, where we can bring light industry. Otherwise, we're going to lose all of our light industrial land, and we won't be able to develop those type of jobs that we need to keep our community vital, alive, and accessible to young, the young generation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so yeah, closing statement. Look, I mean, I appreciate this opportunity, this is a really good conversation. What this is about for me is, it's about continuing the good work that we're doing, right? It's about collaboration and compromise to achieve policies that work for all Ashlanders. I don't believe that focusing on one side of town over the other side of town, and then this side maybe needs a little bit more, is the answer. We need to lift all boats, right? Downtown won't be successful if nobody's living in South Ashland, right? So we need to focus on all of Ashland, and that's a priority for me. I'd also say that, at the end of the day, I'm on the Housing and Human Services Committee, the Transportation Committee, I'm Ashland's representative on the Board of Directors for Rogue Valley Council of Government, I get to sit in these executive sessions, I know what the plans are, I know what the discussions are, I'm ready on day one, there will be no need to have a transition, I know exactly what the city is planning and what is discussing. And if you want to have that continuity, you want to have stability, you want somebody with a vision, and that's going to be able to enact that vision successfully by being able to work with other people, I believe that I'm the candidate for that. We need more young families in Ashland, and I believe I do represent that, I do have a young child and a baby on the way, and we need more kids in our schools, and we need more families moving to this community, and that's throughout the community, not one part of the community.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much for taking the time to come and talk with me and Mary today. Also, thank you to the RV TV crew for filming, and I wish both you guys best of luck in your councils. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you.
It was good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was nice, thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.